This time I go with leaders order, I'm happy to have Richard here. Tonight. If you stand for every day of the day of the leaders, I'm happy to have him.
Well, pray, and fatherly thank you, the master, God, we thank you, God, for allowing us to praise ourself given. Lord, we just pray, God, that in the name of Jesus, God, we pray with our very heart. Our God, bring blessing upon the whole of us, that he may be all good in your sight, with the best of Jesus' majesty and glory.
Attention, seven, eight.
I am a patriot to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with the religion and justice of all.
Next we have a crew with the agenda.
So moved. Second.
It is moving second at the agenda to be approved with any questions. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, the agenda has been approved. Approved of minutes for the regular council meeting on October sixth, twenty twenty five.
So moved.
Second.
It is moving second at the minutes be approved with any questions. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, the minutes have been approved. Under the business, we have a project here in Newsland Abate, Mr. General.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. I'm reporting that view, the cost of five properties that have been pervaded by the city, that being nine oh seven South James Avenue at sixty three hundred dollars, one eighteen bedroom, the more Parkway at forty eight hundred dollars, and six oh two, six oh four, and six oh six, South Eight Avenue, uh, at fifty five hundred, forty one eighty, forty three fifty. Anyone here associated with these properties, does anybody represent these properties? If not, then I move the motion to be closed and consider the resolutions as committed on the agenda to abate these, to put these costs uh, in full resolution, we will lean on the property for what we occurred.
Thank you, sir. Next we have recognition of seniors, masters, game winners. Uh, Floyd and Floyd Akins, the Golden Alumni Award, Staley Hill, those single dominoes, Sandra Thornton, the mile walk. If I can get the Akins to come up first. The Golden Alumni nominees, Floyd and Floyd Akins, Lynette Senior Center, Lynette Alabama. Floyd and Floyd Akins have proudly represented the Lynette City Center at the Masters Games of Alabama for the twenty five years. Over the years, they have not only competed, but also built lasting friendships with participants from across the state. The Akins have shared their knowledge and passion by teaching countless seniors how to play the game. Many of those they mentor became strong competitors, some even going on to beat them in friendly competition. Together, they have earned more than a hundred and six medals at both district and state level, a testament of their skill, dedication, and love for the games. Mr. Akins often shares with humility, despite all his efforts, he has never been able to defeat Ernest Lee. Their sportsmanship, encouragement, and joy for competition continue to inspire others. They are all, they are already looking forward to next year's game and remain as strong advocates for seniors to get involved. Beyond their achievements in the games, Floyd and Floyd are celebrating six to nine years of marriage. A remarkable milestone that mirrors their teamwork, commitment, and support for one another. The Akins embody this true spirit of master games, friendship, competition, and lifelong learning, and are most deserving of a twenty twenty four Hall of Fa- Hall of Fame Golden Alumni Award. Thank you. Approved of the invoices to be paid and submitted by the credit treasury?
So moved. Second.
It is moving second at the invoices be approved with any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, the invoices has been approved. Next we have resolution ten dash twenty five dash zero eight. Confirm.
Uh, uh, the official recognition, I said, Mr. Senior Master. Senior Master.
Mr. Staley Hill. If you were coming forward with this thought, would you? And if this thought was, would you all come forward?
Mr. Thomas, you got a job that is here.
Mr. Staley Hill, uh, Joy Staley Hill, he won a gold medal for Domino's, single Domino's. And when I say competition lasted from eight o'clock to lunchtime, it was strong competition, but he came out with the gold medal, and we are so proud of his accomplishment. And he's here with his beautiful wife, Karen. Got that, go.
Congratulations, Mr. Hill.
And that's my mile walk. We want to thank the, the mayor and council for supporting us at the Masters Games, which was held in Trustville, Alabama. We had one for time. Thank you.
Next we have resolution ten dash twenty five dash zero eight, confirm the report of costs for nuisance abatement. Resolution ten dash twenty five dash zero eight. Resolution confirm the report of costs on nuisance abatement. Whereas the Senate that previously adopted a resolution declaring the hearing after described property as a public nuisance, and after a hearing on the resolution, I recommend the code enforcement officer to abate the nuisance. Whereas a hearing was held, and the code enforcement officer has filed his report of costs for the work of abatement, which now comes before the council for consideration. Therefore, upon motion due to made and seconded, it is hereby resolved that the report of costs filed by the code enforcement officer of the abatement costs for property belonging to James H. and Teresa J. Wallace and Karen Charles Wallace at one eighteen bedroom in Morgan Park, where Lynette Alabama are found to be reasonable and are hereby approved and confirmed. Further resolved that pursuant to eleven dash forty dash thirty three Code of Alabama nineteen seventy five, a special assessment lien is placed on the hearing after described property and of amount of four thousand eight hundred dollars. A certified confidence resolution fixing lien should be recorded in the office of the judge of probate of Chambers County, Alabama. Entries at this statutory rate shall be due to commence within thirty days of this date. Adopted and approved this twentieth day of October, twenty twenty five. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
It is motion and second at resolution ten dash twenty five dash zero eight be approved with any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, the resolution has been approved. Next we have resolution ten dash twenty five dash zero nine, confirm and report of costs on nuisance abatement at thirty North Twelfth Avenue, Lynette, Alabama. Whereas the city of Lynette previously adopted a resolution declaring the hearing after described property as a public nuisance, and after a hearing on the resolution, directed the code enforcement officer to abate the nuisance. Whereas a hearing was held, and the code enforcement officer has filed his report of costs for the week for the work of abatement, which now comes before the council for consideration. Therefore, upon motion due to made and seconded, it is hereby resolved that the report of costs filed by the code enforcement officer on the abatement costs for the property belonging to Robert and Rose Scott and Carol Carl O'Scott at eight thirty nine North Twelfth Avenue, Lynette, Alabama are found to be reasonable and are hereby approved and confirmed. Further resolved that pursuant to eleven dash forty dash thirty three Code of Alabama nineteen seventy five, a special assessment lien is placed on the hearing after described property in the amount of four thousand dollars. A certified confidence resolution fixing lien shall be recorded in the office of the judge of probate of Chambers County, Alabama. Entries at the statutory rate shall be due to commence within thirty days of this date adopted and approved this twentieth day of October, twenty twenty five. Thank you, ma'am. Can I get a motion?
So moved. Second.
It is moving second at resolution ten dash twenty five dash ten be approved.
Oh, no.
Oh, no. Are there any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, the resolution has been approved. Next we have resolution ten dash twenty five dash ten, confirm the report of costs on nuisance abatement six oh two, six oh four, and six oh six, South Eighth Street, Lynette, Alabama. Ms. Thomas.
Um, resolution confirm the report of costs on nuisance abatement. Whereas the city of Lynette previously adopted a resolution declaring the hearing after described property as a public nuisance, and after a hearing on the resolution, directed the code enforcement officer to abate the nuisance. Whereas a hearing was held, and the code enforcement officer has filed his reports of costs for the work of abatement, which now comes before the council for consideration. Therefore, upon motion due made and seconded, it is hereby resolved that the report of costs filed by the code enforcement officer on the abatement costs for property belonging to David C. Roberts and Norma Jean Roberts at six oh two, six oh four, six oh six, South Eighth Street, Lynette, Alabama, are found to be reasonable and hereby approved and confirmed. Further, further resolved that pursuant to eleven dash forty dash thirty three Code of Alabama nineteen seventy five, a special assessment lien is placed on the hearing af- hearing after described property in the amount of fourteen thousand and thirty dollars. Um, and a certified confidence resolution fixing lien shall be recorded in the office of the judge of probate of probate of Chambers County, Alabama. Entries at the statutory rate shall be due to commence within thirty days of this date. And this is adopted and approved as of today, the twentieth day of October, twenty twenty five.
Thank you, ma'am. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Sir.
It is moving second at resolution ten dash twenty five dash ten be approved with any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, the resolution has been approved. Next we have resolution ten dash twenty five dash eleven, resolution for appointment of Richard Chapman to Chattahoochee Valley Water Board to operate. Resolution ten dash twenty five dash eleven, appointment to the board of directors of the Chattahoochee Valley Water Supply District. Whereas the Senate and that has three representatives on the board of directors for the Chattahoochee Valley Water Supply District, and whereas they have currently made themselves on the board, and whereas being further resolved by the Senate and the mayor and councilman, Richard Chapman, and employee of the Senate and that, be hereby appointed to the board of directors of the Chattahoochee Valley Water Supply District, for a term of four years commencing immediately, adopted this twentieth day of October, twenty twenty five. Can I get a motion?
So moved. Second.
It is moving second at resolution ten dash twenty five dash zero eight be approved. Are there any questions?
I have a question. Which two of these appointments are they making?
These are the kids that, um, Mr. Akins. Are there any other questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, resolution zero, resolution ten dash twenty five dash eleven has been approved. Next we have resolution ten dash twenty five dash twelve, appointment to the board of directors of this Chattahoochee Valley Water Supply District. Whereas the Senate and that has three representatives on the board of directors for the Chattahoochee Valley Water Supply District, and whereas they have currently made themselves on the board, and therefore being hereby resolved by the Senate and the mayor and councilman, Brandon Tucker, and employee of the Senate and that, be hereby appointed to the board of directors for the Chattahoochee Valley Water Supply, Supply District for a term of four years commencing immediately, adopted this twentieth day of October, twenty twenty five. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
It is moving second at resolution ten dash twenty five dash twelve be approved. Are there any questions? Are there any questions?
Question. Who's, you say, who's the, this?
Mr. Terry.
Yes, Mr. Reed's term is up. I guess a little bit of application, Mr. Terry, I don't give like, uh, person on the board, the term is up, and council appointment, do we have to reappoint, or can that person just be taken off without the council board?
When does the term expire?
It's a four-year term, we just reported Mr. Reed last year.
I, I'm not certain of the reasons for, um, whether or not, you know, the board. I think, you know, the question is, are they locked into this for the year? Um, and I think the council can consider this, I would like to look at that, though, if that's, that's a question.
I can understand this, eh, this term is expiring, correct. But we just reported Mr. Reed just months ago, last year, last year, just been. And so if this council appointed him, I'm not against, right, Mr. Tucker appointing him, but if this council appointed him, then we should, um, or remove the person that's already there.
Well, I guess, I guess, I guess one way also of looking at that is, uh, taking this action, uh, this rule immediately from that, from that position. If this council believes that he should be appointed, you know, I have a question in some of the direction.
I have a question, I mean, if there's a resolution for somebody to serve four years, right, somebody in the middle, and four years haven't expired, it's kind of like double jeopardy to me to, to vote on another person for four years when we voted on another resolution that has a number that's been recorded for somebody to serve four years. It seem like to me we would have to go back, you know, maybe the prior resolution, uh, to, to execute that one in order to do this thing, because we already have a resolution for four years for somebody else.
And I don't know if there are.
If this, I'm sorry, if this is a matter of appointment, then I'm saying, you know, uh, which I think you choose, we don't choose, but we just want to make sure that we write with him serving a four-year term, uh, on another resolution.
When, when was this one? When was that?
Counselor, that is a mayor proclamation, but it's a council, it's a council, I have to agree. It's been, some months ago, we just reappointed him, just, it's been, well, that's been, super months ago. Wait, what's wrong with you now? We, we let, we let him, I don't know, we let him. I have no questions, no, that is what it's talking.
I think, I think there is some connection, talking to the clerk, and I'm not sure if there's some way to be with this. Um, there, there is some question as to whether or not this term is expired, at least the city having that token, the term is expired. Uh, but as I said, I don't know when this term expires. So it may be, there's better course for us to look at that, so that I understand the term, and understand this council, and the next council will have the opportunity to make that term. So, I could, with there being some unclear matters as to when the term expires, I would want to hear all that. I think that was this one, and, and that, that was maybe the point.
I move that.
If, if, if that can be, if that can be clarified, then it would be helpful.
So you're saying this can be moved on tonight?
I, I'm saying that I'm getting a little conflict information as to when the term expires. And so I don't, I don't know that I personally thought that I might see that. With this being a council appointment, I think that we need to be clear about that. Uh, and if there's some extenuating circumstances that cause for, for the important change, then that information should be, I guess, before the council, at least before.
Mr. Mayor, was there, I'm, I'm sorry, excuse me, was there, uh, a reason somewhere, um, Mr. Reed wasn't able to, he, did he, did he, uh, he just couldn't finish, or was it just a reason that he just, uh, there's a replacement?
Is there a replacement?
Mr. Mayor, if, if I may, my, yeah, I wish.
Can I say something? You know, I'm, 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 can I say something? But should we vote on it anyway, and then if we're in the right, we won't have to come back and do this again?
I, I think we need to know, I think we need to know. That's always, that's always, that's always, I, I think, you know, the, the better practice with this, this meeting or any other meetings, they have all information in front of us to make the right decision on time. So we don't have to go back in front of it. I don't know whether, uh, the city's been fulfilling his obligations under the, you know, on, on the board or not. On his goals, maybe, but not as much as we can solve.
Can the motion be stapled? Is that possible? Because I know we like, uh,
We vote, we vote.
Get, get a new council, take this up and staple it by this council?
Uh, yes.
I reckon both have to be stapled, just for further consideration, because the attorney has to discuss the legality of this. Second.
The motion and second at resolution ten dash twenty five dash twelve be taken.
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Mr. Donald?
Yes.
And, and for the standing committee, council members, all along.
Well, that's the thing for their, for their, for their, for their award that y'all won from y'all practice, as, uh.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember, um, Altrin?
You know, it's just good to see all of the seniors and seeing these people, you all just being involved, so that, that encouraged us, that's why, so thank you, thank you for being with the city.
Councilmember Tucker?
Uh, yeah, Mayor, uh, as y'all can see, I've kind of got a code. Uh, but I just want to thank all the seniors for what y'all do and how y'all participate. I was part of it for a long time, so I, uh, it's going, what you have to go through, get them there and get you in the right spot and make you end up being cheated on and everything like that, so I understand all the stuff that you, you have to go through. And also, Mayor, I'd like to say, uh, thank District Three, so, for allowing me to, uh, represent them for three years. And, uh, anytime I have a problem in District Three, they call me, uh, Mayor, I'm thankful every time I would call you, you get right on it and get people to where they need to be. And also, I just thank, uh, everybody for coming and, uh, just being who you are. Uh, most, what I really want to say is that, um, when the next council come in, try to be together more than what we are here. Because it, it doesn't make anybody look good at all. And so we had some discrepancies, yes, yes, right hand, this should have been brought up before we brought it to the council. We want to know how can you put on that gym and go through what we just went through. So that's all, I wish that the next council, when you come here, make sure that, uh, talk it out before you get here. I learned that, and I've been here three years, and it took me two and a half years to learn. So, so I just wanted everybody to understand that, uh, Lynette is a good place to live and grow up in, and we're not going to stop doing what we're doing, mostly participating in anything that the city has, and and hopefully we'll have, uh, continue our cleanup that we're doing for the city and moving the city forward. Thank you, y'all.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Thomas?
Um, yes, like everyone has said, uh, we thank the, uh, thank Mrs. Thornton and the, uh, senior cities, the senior center for all you have done, and all that you're doing, continue with your good work that you're doing. Uh, also, again, I would like to thank, uh, the city of Lynette. I would like to thank, uh, the District Four people that I work with, uh, for my constituents. I definitely want to thank the, the citizens, uh, the, the city workers that I've worked with, uh, for nine years. And, um, and I, I really felt like, um, you know, it's not a sad moment, it's just a complete assignment that I've done. I think that, um, at least I think so, I think I spoke well for my constituents in District Four. And I pray that Brandon, you will continue to do the same as you entered into the seat. Uh, I just want to say this to you right quick, um, because I don't know if you have a chance, but I'm going to tell you right now. Uh, I was thinking about something to tell you as a councilperson that's going to be stepping into this, into this seat. And God had placed on my heart to tell you this, to remember these three, these, these three letters, CPR, that I want you to continue to care for the district. It's a, care is an action burger. It is, um, for you to feel their concerns and their interests, and be approachable and always be you. The P, pray for yourself, because there's going to be some decisions that you're going to make, that everybody's not going to be excited about. But you just got to make sure that the decision that you make, that you are, you are happy with the decision that you made. Not what nobody else says, or what anybody else does, just make sure that you are happy with the decision that you voted on and stand on. And then R, again, to reassure the people that voted for you, that even the ones that voted against you, and the ones that didn't even vote at all, that, that you will continue to be their voice. They can rely on you even through the tough conversations and discussions. This is just to reassure, reassure them that you will always be their voice, and it goes a long way. So again, I just wanted to say, you remember those things, C P R, and you will go a long way in this seat. And thank you for everything, and thank everybody for all that you have done for me. And that's all I have to say, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Thomas. Councilmember Dawes?
I just want to say that I've been on the council for five years, and I've never talked a long time. Not as versus Angela. But tonight, I have to. Uh, to my fellow colleagues, the mayor, it has been a great honor to serve on this managing team for the great city of the net for five years. We have not always agreed, nor should we, but it's our debating differences that caused too many decisions for the great city. To my District Five, thank you for your support in me, and, uh, I pray that I have served well. We have got a lot done in District Five and paved several roads. Uh, thanks to Rocket and his street department, Major Water League who prepared, thanks to Richard and his department. We paved Crystal Spring Housing, uh, after researching who owns the roads. Uh, that took at least a couple of years for me to figure that out. Uh, we drained the water from Crystal Spring, uh, parking where they play it, where College Park, walking areas. Uh, Chris Clark and his team to install a new drain pipe to go across his land so that the water would drain all into the creek on the other side of Crystal Springs. Uh, they were really happy about that. Uh, first years we met at City Hall and, uh, to hear about our schools and how we're doing and beautification of our area, to engage the people, being in fact, because of lack of participation. We have tried to answer every complaint and concern. We served as, I served as the chairman on the, uh, airport committee until the day this opening day. I will miss you, but not that much. I pray I left you with a great impression that I love the net. For the new council coming in, I challenge you to use your imagination, to think outside the box. Don't get complacent, because time is imminent. We leave you with a descending economy. Revenue will have to be sought, avenues of business will have to be created. We must charge, we must charge active entrepreneurs, meet with landlords and help fill vacant stores, storefronts, and strip malls. Acquire engineering advice for installing sewage and pillow growth all the way to the interstate. Therefore, we will begin to grow mostly at, creating, uh, uh, more green space for elderly and families, for more recreation activities. I want to put you on point that we are not making money, we are on a decline. For the last year budget was three hundred fifteen thousand, now it's, uh, surplus, eighty-two thousand surplus, now that's two hundred thirty-three thousand difference. That almost tells me that we're not making money. Profit and loss statement would be your guide in knowing what months you made money and what months you didn't make. Before, uh, before any more raises or positions or field, I challenge you to have a work session before any more spending out of, just out of your pocket. Councilman Angela, I'll miss checking your temperature when you got a short speech. Runny, I'll miss you coming in with your three-piece suit on like it's a demon ordination. Ms. Austin, I'll miss your wonderful smile and hugs and, and annoying use of the microphone. And Tony, I'm just going to miss you. Mayor, I want to thank you for being the mayor, uh, doing the terms I was here. Uh, I'll miss you thinking that none of us men can read. Then I would let me read the proclamation, then you decided I want to show off you can read tonight. And I called him Pharaoh, and, uh, after this meeting, no more than too long, I want you to let our people go. And, uh, Mr. Gray, I'm going to miss you for saying I get back with you. Mr. Devin, you've been so kind this week. Well, thank you for your generosity, every time I call and need something, you sit down and, and give me just about everything I ask for. I just thank you that the department here is, and all y'all, y'all have been a great team. And I hope the next council sees the greatness in you and keep your voice, uh, on the next meeting. Thank all of you, thank the citizens, and thank all of you, what you have been through. Want to thank everybody, uh, for supporting us. And congratulations to the new council. I'm looking for the great things that you're about to do. I still am going to start a net economic interest group to try to aid and help out the city. I live here, and I got a business mind, and I see how I can still advance and help the city. I want to work with the new mayor council, well, the new council in St., I want to work with y'all and to help out our city. God bless you. Thank you.
Thank you, Pharaoh. Presented to the town of Long for many years of service to the citizens of this community. We thank you, Senator Alabam, October twenty, twenty twenty five. Also, thank you for the four years of service to the citizens of this community. Thank you, Senator Alabam, October twenty, twenty twenty five. Thank you.
And to, um, uh, councilwoman, story, we've already talked, I've already given her, um, the, the go ahead, but I just want to thank you for what you've done, and this council, you all have been wonderful. Thank you, and all of you. I appreciate you. So keep moving, council, but the city of the net, he doesn't regret that.
Presented to Mr. Ryan, uh, for the years of service to the citizens of this community, we thank you. We thank you, Senator Alabam, October twenty, twenty twenty five.
I appreciate you.
Presented to Angela K. Thomas, for many years of service to the citizens of this community, we thank you, Senator Alabam, October twenty, twenty twenty five. Presented to Tiffany Dawes for your many years of service to the citizens of this community, we thank you, Senator Alabam, October twenty, twenty twenty five.
Y'all got to say it right in the end. Call one more, y'all.
And I would like to say, each of you, I enjoy working with you all as a team. We didn't always agree, but we always work things out, and I appreciate everything you did. And being a great help, every time I stop by, I'm open for any ideas of recommendation or what have you. I look forward to continue, uh, working with you. And Mr. Dawes, you said, I got in his office, I stopped calling, and you said, I guess we should stop that calling. Have a few more announcements, um, bigger path, Blue City is coming, take the Blue shot here at the Senior Center on Thursday, October the twenty-third, thirteen oh-two, uh, Cherry Drive, from ten thirty A M to two P M. You must have I D and bring your insurance card, card, but the shot is free if you bring your I D and insurance card. Medicare open enrollment, it's already started, October fifteenth through December seventh. Check to see if your prescriptions are covered. See if you qualify for your Part B, premium access. Reduced estimated calls, like deductibles and other out-of-pocket calls. Inslow additional benefits offered by Medicare Advantage Plan. Talk to a trained Medicare counselor for health-compensating plans. Counselors are not affiliated with any insurance company and would not attempt to say you insurance. Bring your Medicare card and list all medications in your report, man. Okay, and this will take place on November the fourth, from eleven A M to three P M at the Senior Center located at thirteen oh-two Cherry Drive. So, uh, if you have any questions about Medicare, come out of center between hours of eleven and three on November the fourth. Others to appear before the agenda, Mr. Gray, uh, if there are any.
Yes, there is one, uh, I think she is originally on the, on Brandon, the accident, was that called?
No, she called, I think she's not going to be here later.
I forgot that. Now I'll say what I'm listening. Uh, Mr. Mayor, members, members of the council, um, I would like to let you all know how much I appreciate working with each of you. I have spoken, I've paid to everyone individually on some legal issue over the years. Uh, one thing I realized about all of you, you all are very different. You all have different perspectives, but one thing, another question, and that is your love for the city of the net. And so I just thank you for just working with me. We don't agree sometimes, but that's okay. But I appreciate you all and your dedication to the city. So it's going to be hard, we're looking up there, but I would, for one, two, three, four, five, with the names that I already know, uh, we will get to know some more names. Thank you all so much.
Thank you.
Ms. Yu? Yes, Senator, um, I want to say to this council that what you've done does not go unnoticed. You've had a hard job, but you have handled it in a professional manner. And like Ms. Gray said, it's obvious that you all love the city of the net. And I just appreciate working with you all, and not only working with you all, like Ms. Thomas said two weeks ago, I feel like I've gained some friends. So I thank you. And I think they deserve a standing ovation.
Presented to the second, thank our seniors for coming out, um, tonight. We appreciate you all, appreciate your stars following where she goes, straight along. Uh, the board from Department of Health, we will sell them, Mr. Rich, check.
And now we have a whole lot to say, but, you know, we got a, I got a, a fight going on on South Fifth and Avenue. I'm at a corner there, place I set on the foot of, two of the water line, and so if you live in the area, just be able to, uh, we'll be in the area. Pop star, next page, we'll cover the praise of our water line on it. That's all I can say.
Chief, uh, Chad?
Um, I don't really have a whole lot tonight. Uh, everything's running good. We just got one out of, uh, Whuppy School. We got the, uh, Leadership Award grant and runner-up in, uh, in academics, real foot class, and, uh, just about where we need to be. He's going to start very next two in a month, along with two others. Um, we're, we're doing good. Called all his down just a little bit, about twenty last month when we worked, but, uh, it's much later. We're doing good.
Mr. McGann, Recreation Department?
I don't have much to add, but I don't really like to come out and support any, uh, football team. Uh, then we played championship game, opened up and gave some money to you on Tuesday, haven't signed yet. Um, we've played mobile hockey this year, and they did really well. Also, I would report that our girls basketball team is my first time this year. In ten years, twelve, we will be playing state championships. We don't have time yet. As a matter of fact, I would like all the councilmen to support, even for Mr. Long, we've been phoned called from, um, experiencing, must be money. And also thank you, Mr. Dawes, for coming out and giving a free transportation when we needed. Just thanks all of y'all for everything you did, phone calls, stuff, everybody, and I appreciate you guys. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Gates, I think there's something coming up next week.
Oh, this area, we have, it's been areas from some, this area continues to. Next week, we'll be having our, uh, trick or treating, uh, event, so if anyone, if there's any kind of organization or benefit you want to come out and sell, that you always do, please come out and support, uh, Mr. Dawes, we will pull to your hot dogs again, so. Put me on the spot.
Mr. Lo?
No, I don't have a whole lot. Like, I'm, uh, trying to get the street paved, and of course, whether it's direction or who, been doing a lot of sidewalk repair, uh, and wall repair and gen, looks a lot better over there. Anybody got better seats, it looks a lot better, uh, but just trying to get what's best for the city.
Mr. Darnold, Dan?
I really don't have that much. Uh, we're fine getting around, got a new machine. We'll get some more stuff cleaned up with that. Uh, we're really working on the driveways and stuff, so, uh, I beg everybody that's coming up behind the road, there are machines out there. Please look out for, they sling stuff a long ways, get, get tariffs and stuff. Uh, that's really about it. Uh, it's get fall time, so give us a little leeway on the brush trucks coming around. Everybody picking up their yards, it takes a lot of work, but we're working on it.
Mr. Sabreton, uh, Mayor Boy?
Good evening, Mayor Council. Uh, infrastructure improvements are continuing. We are, I had a phone call today, we are really, really close to getting some individuals putting their deposits down to, uh, start building a hangar project. Uh, we just got to get a, a ground lease that will get approved by the next city council. Now, we're going to have that in place, but I think before they write the checkbook, we are a lot closer than we were before. And we should have jet fuel on station around the fourth of December. That should be the end chain.
Mrs. Sellers, Patrick and David?
Yes, we are. On the left side, we, young man, as soon as we're, we're working in the middle of this area. Uh, we're doing, changing out, uh, structures and, uh, conductors, uh, some problems a lot. Uh, and just trying to reroute and run, getting some of the black out to be cleaned up again, uh, uh, yeah, so we, if there's a little power outage or you can fix, so this is no ahead of time, at least today it's over here, but, and going. Gas front getting on the way on the Cero. They are, I think around Thirty-Sixth Avenue, uh, they hope to be complete with that, but they ran into a little hiccup today with some rock, they found a rock out there, so the boring machine had a little issue with the rock, but they are, they don't get it, and they are moving, so we are hopeful to have that part of, uh, project. We can hope it by the week, and then they'll be building this down, and it started first street area, so if I be mindful, there's congestion up there, and there'll be some structure going on, so, um, uh, this, they're doing a root good job, and everywhere they have a major, but, you know, so, that's what we're standing on that.
Thank you, sir. And I would just like to remind everyone that, uh, November the first, we have, uh, much to clean up. We're heading to City Hall at nine o'clock, nine o'clock, um, so, anybody that wants to come out and, uh, have us be a party to come. At our next meeting will be November the third, that would be the square beginning of the meeting council at six o'clock in this room here, so if you, uh, board members, councilmembers, invite your friend and your family. If you, uh, board members, council members, invite your friends and your family to, uh, come out and support you from November third. Uh, anybody that's coming for the council, can I get a motion to adjourn?
Thank you.
And one other thing, don't forget to go out and vote tomorrow, uh, at the Dead High School, for, um, District Thirty-Eight, House District Thirty-Eight. I know we have, uh, Christian Nelson from Chambers County, uh, and has two other, nine, eight, from Lee County. But the poll opened up at seven, from seven to seven at the Dead High School tomorrow. Uh, can I get a motion to adjourn?
So, thank you.